Randy, can you hear us? Okay. All right. So it's 6:30 September 9th. Call this public hearing to order. Has everybody here signed the sign-in sheet? I know I did not. First, how did she get up there? I have something actually everybody up here. You sign this?
I did not.
So we'll make sure everybody gets a sign-in sheet signed. That's up here and out there just to keep us legal. And we, do we have any citizens input for this meeting? You want to do yours in the next meeting? Maybe we'll get more people involved in the regular session.
Hi. I'm Cecilia with the P&amp;Z Committee, and I wanted to speak on the item C that's on the public hearing, just to let you know what we came up with at our meeting. And we decided not to pursue letting them have a special permit to put in more storage units because we felt like there was better uses for the commercial space.
Great. Thank you. Any other citizens input? Yes, ma'am?
Can't hear you.
You can. Can you stand up and may I address?
Well, I spoke last month in regards to Dover. One of the homeowners on Dover, I need to speak.
So are you talking about something that's on the agenda or?
Right. I'm one of the homeowners on Dover.
Right. But you're talking about the regular session.
I guess so. I don't know. I just know if I need to speak again.
Yes. No, well, and we can have you speak in the regular session, yes, because that's on that agenda. And then they can give you a sign-in sheet, so anyway, we can get your name on record. We got to keep all that stuff. Is there any other citizen input for the public hearing? No? Okay. So I'll take us right into the public hearing, which is 4A, Replat 121 Dover Drive, West Watkins, Texas, 75474. Legal inscription is S2157, Vetrei Investment, addition lot 12, acres is 1.717, property ID is 238508, and Dover 205, and 205 Dover Drive, West Watkins, Texas, legal inscription is S2157, Vetrei Investment, addition lots 11, acres is 1.102, property ID is 238507, the resident single family, two, SF2, the request is to grant a replat of the 250 to 17 lots with three streets. Is there anybody here to speak on this one?
Yes, I am.
If I had to pause for just one second, was that the one you were talking about, ma'am? The Dover?
Uh huh. We talked about Dover.
I was thinking you were telling me she was talking about one that was on Dover. So if we could real quick, could I pause and if you want to voice, voice your concerns or opinions, whatever they may be, you can go ahead and do that now. I apologize for my miscommunication.
No, it's okay. I am one of the homeowners on Dover, 12th Street, Dover. I'm just going to restate what I said last month with you guys, is that as homeowners and we talk with our neighbors and pushing some families, and my dad's working, and stuff last month, we do not want this to happen in our neighborhood. We have three new builds in the last few months, and some of the neighbors that are already being coming in are not treating our neighborhood great, and I can already see that this is the direction we're going ahead with this. We did address the sewage issue last month in our neighborhood and how bad they are. We just had a rain. Our yard, of course, turned into a swamp with everybody else's yard. We have a lot of wildlife in that neighborhood, especially where they're wanting to put this project, it's going to run out all of our wildlife. If they build this up, it could potentially be really bad for the rest of the neighborhood with the sewage issues that were already coming because we have drainage and sewage issues all over that neighborhood. It basically just turns into a swamp every time it rains. But as a homeowner who has put a lot of money, time into our property, we fell in love with the neighborhood, it's a quiet neighborhood, it's a peaceful neighborhood, everybody respects the property and each other, bringing in 17 homes is not idea, and it's not what we signed up for as homeowners. We are seriously considering that we would potentially be selling our home if this project fails to work.
Thank you. Did you get the sheet from her? Thank you, ma'am. Sir?
My name is Paul Friedman with Next Design and Build, and I'm here to present the paper of subdivision. I only have three copies of the replat. I'm sure two of them are here. So this, this is similar to, I think, what you have seen before. The first page is showing the existing topography with the replat over it. The second page is much clearer to look at. It, so the, the organization slightly different from before because we are complying with the city standards, and we have a 60-foot radius cul-de-sac. And the common area has moved to preserve the existing pond that is there, which is, you know, currently holds water. And to deal with future runoff, we would propose, you know, expanding the pond within that common area. And the number of lots has reduced from 17 to 12 total lots. And we are continuing the Rock Drive, street, street into Dover Drive and Duck Drive, and these would all be proposed to be private roads with private utility easements, and it would all be maintained by an HOA. And that's pretty much our layout and our proposal. You can see each, within each set, within each lot, we're showing a 25-foot front setbacks, side and rear setbacks, and 25-foot corner setbacks. So that's, that's my presentation for the replat.
Thank you. And what did we say the road was going to be?
Asphalt with, they're looking at concrete curbs. Yeah, it would be engineered to the standards with, in Cock and any requirements.
Can we turn him up a little bit? One, one second, sir. We're going to try to turn you up a little bit. Should be able to turn the TV up.
All right, Randy, you also speak up a little bit so I can write you here.
He wants the language of that.
Yeah. I actually heard the question. Yeah, he was wanting the language of the HOA. Actually, at this time, I did not have that language. I don't know what it is. I mean, it would be, you know, kind of the standard kind of HOA agreements.
So we're not, we're not?
I don't have the language.
Right. So right now, you're not, we're not looking at whether it's going to be a voluntary HOA or what, right?
Um, I would assume it would be required, the, the streets would, it would be part of the HOA, so.
What happens if the HOA defaults, defunks, goes away, the city, the city becomes responsible for the streets and the drainage and?
Yeah, I don't know all the legal, the legal issues with that, but, but yeah, that's, it would be maintained and right now proposed to be maintained by an HOA.
So they are getting this current north central cause, which is also what the city requires for our street. So whether we adopted it or not, it is built to contain as the city would require.
Right. No, I understand that, but we would have, we would budget for maintaining and repairing those streets forever, but, but, but if, but five years from now, 10 years from now, 15 years from now, I don't want to handicap future, future councils or future budgets because that HOA, we allowed them to build in there, and the HOA was supposed to maintain the roads, and then they go defunct, they disappear, they, you know, 12 houses, and even if it's only, you know, 600 feet of road, that still might be $25,000 or $30,000 a year to maintain. And that, you know, that means that 12 houses are going to split 3,000, you know, it's $36,000, that's $3,000 a house. And being in an HOA that has $250 a year dues, it, we struggle to, we struggle to collect the $250 dues and trying to, to put that burden on a homeowner in that area that there's only 12 people to split. If, if five of them don't pay, then seven of them say they want to, and five of them don't, then the seven are burdened with it. And that's a, that's a, that's a scary thought, especially when you have HOA participation that sometimes they'll even question whether or not they're in the HOA because they don't want to pay the $250. Trying to collect 3,000 or 4,000 out of them might be difficult. I mean, you know, JD, give me, you got an idea of what it would cost to maintain? What do we have? 200, how many, how much, how much road do we have? We have the cul-de-sac and the drainage around it.
Yeah, I'm, I, I don't know exactly.
287 right here?
Probably, yeah, 400 or 500 feet or more.
So it's probably the same as that, if I should, or is that, that's just a line? So you got 41, 420?
Right, probably in there.
Yeah. 20, 16, 180. Same thing there, 360.
Is Shen, is Randy was going to do HOA maintained or did he adopt it? Is that still a requirement? Or are they just at HOA?
It looks like it's 500 feet. Yeah. To cost them anything, probably.
I'm not sure about that. I know that the plan was HOA, but if that's not viable option.
It would cost them 10,000. But it's still going to be a thousand bucks a family. It wouldn't, it wouldn't.
If you make it cement, concrete would not be much less.
So look, if, if we're being honest, well, cement or concrete, I think West Watkins, and this is my personal opinion, and I give those all the time, I know people don't like them, some close to that, but West Watkins is probably 20 to 30 years away from being able to adopt concrete anything. I'm just, I mean, that's, that's just being honest. The only kind of roads we're going to be able to adopt in this city would be asphalt, chip seal, rock, things in that nature, because the, the skill set and the equipment needed for concrete roads, you can't, you can't, you can't utilize, that's specialty equipment, right? You can utilize equipment that is more a hybrid type of equipment to maintain those other things. There's, there's ways you can use those equipment.
We know, just that we know the rest.
Yeah, but there's no guarantee, what I'm saying is there's no guarantee that a concrete road will not fail you. I mean, I don't know if anybody's paid attention to what goes on in the world today. Unfortunately, with EPA and all these things, our materials are not as good as they're used. Right? So, so all the, all the legalities that, that people are having to jump through with making asphalt and, and concrete, all these different things, and there's actually some shortage on ash for concrete, I don't know if anybody's aware of that, but, so there's, there's a lot of things that go into this, so they're having to come up with new technologies. I mean, if ever, all of us drive around, you see failed concrete all the time as well. So I, the only reason why I was bringing that up is I just don't want us all to get it fixed and say, we need to make everybody do concrete everything. Concrete doesn't last forever either. Nothing lasts forever is the reality of it.
Don't disagree with you at all. I think with that, I think that emphasizes my point that if the city is, if, if there's a HOA that's responsible for maintaining those roads and drainage, and they fail, then it becomes the city's problem to maintain those roads and ditches.
Right.
And that's, you know, you're asking us to approve something that five years from now we're going to own. And we're not, we're not, and we're, and as a city, we're not really prepared to own that, the maintenance of that road unless we do something different on the road in the, in the plan. Does that make sense?
Yeah, well, of course, I hope that you wouldn't own it in five years.
I hope in one hand.
It would continue. I guess the only option is you would own it immediately if these roads were public. Is that right?
But I think we would have a different, I think we'd have a different concept about impact on the city and everything else rather than just saying this is acceptable. Does that make sense?
Yes, but like I said, the, the intention was to make them HOA and to not put that burden on the city. So I can't speak to what happens in the future.
Yeah, but I think we, I think we have to speak to what the, what the future is because that's what we're looking at is what happens over the next five, 10, 15, 20 years.
Any other questions on this one? Sir, do you have anything else?
On the replat, I did not. I think it pretty much speaks for itself as just subdividing the property as shown.
Shannon, can we get the, the 12, the 17 moved into 12 as well, so it's not 17 on the?
Yeah, I have to, when I do this, I have to delay the request.
Okay.
And that's always requested. It was just modify that.
I understand, I understand. Okay. No, I'm just, I, you know, I would hate for it to say 17, and then, even though it only has 12, then something changed later.
All right. So what we want to move to B. You all good with that? Are you going to, do you have any more questions on A? No questions? So today is site plan 121, Dover Drive, West Watkins, Texas, 75474, legal inscription is S2157, Vetrei Investment, addition lot 11, acres is 1.717, property ID is 238508, and Dover, and 205 Dover Drive, West Watkins, Texas, legal inscription is S2157, Vetrei Investment, addition lot 11, acres is 1.102, property ID is 238507, town seat, two, two. Request is approved the site plans. Okay.
The site plans I just passed out is, one is a kind of an overall with a aerial image and kind of colored showing the enlarged pond area. And then the, the second page is the proposed site plan showing pretty much exactly what the plat we, I just presented shows, except it's also showing possible layouts of how the houses would lay out and driveways, but these are just kind of conceptual right now that it, they may lay out slightly differently than what's shown here. But, so other than that, that's, that's it. It's just showing road circulation and the site plan that complies kind of with the replat.
So my guess is now with the retention pond, the excavation work of this, of all the site plans are going to try to divert most of the runoff water, right? Redirect all this towards the retention pond and then release from there out.
Yeah, I think that would be the goal, and maybe some behind, so, yeah, that's the goal, is to, to, to contain it there and then release it slowly and regrade everything to protect the houses or, or.
No, no, and I'm saying.
And getting more water than is already going.
Yeah, everything would go towards, would end up technically going towards the south, which is where that pond currently is now, and then they ruin it.
And our civil engineers are kind of working on that, but we'll, we'll work on that on the next page.
Speaking of that one, which is the other person who normally presents this, he had said they were thinking about possibly widening and deepening that so that it will hold more water and make it where it will move slower and help, to helping help all the drainage where it flows out with the rest of the neighborhood, it'll slow it down and maybe not flood it as bad also. So they're trying to actually fix some of the issues not even caused by the development.
Okay.
There's a creek in the back, right?
Yes. I have recently learned that, apparently that used to be a concrete plant right there, the whole area.
Okay. Do you have any questions about the back plan? We'll go to C, special use permit, back plan, for 140 West Highway 276, West Watkins, Texas, 75474, legal inscription is A0418, handle Zachariah Track 6, ZF1, acres is .951, property ID is 10184, don't, don't commercial, request is to approve a special use permit to place storage units on the property and approve the back plan. You make any discussion on that till we have three more?
Yes, sir. Did I just kind of get right into it?
Yeah.
Sounds good. Yeah, I believe that Planning and Zoning Committee gave the council a recommendation to not approve the site plans to you guys. I think that's what it resulted in. I'm coming from the side that I believe that it should be, the site plan should be approved, and that the self-storage is the highest and best use for this piece of property. And I've also had conversations with my entitlement attorney, and we both shared thoughts that the way Thursday was conducted was a little bit mishandled and somewhat misappropriate, which resulted in the recommending or not recommending the site plans for city council. Again, this is following rezoning. This property used to be half presidential, half commercial back, and I believe it was August where we rezoned to fully commercial with the intent to put the self-storage facility here in that pass. So just kind of deconstructing Thursday, and then I'll get into some of the data that I have and more of the benefits to the community. But based on Thursday, when I presented the site plans, you know, I was told that the variances looked too small, which I think added to part of not recommending to you guys to approve these site plans. I don't know if you have a copy of the site plans? I could hand some out to you.
Yeah.
I've got a few more that's easier for y'all. It's the same one.
Well, it is in your packet.
Yeah. Yeah. But yeah, kind of, so this first point I just wanted to address, it said it was too, the variances were too small. I can confirm with you and Shannon, you know, with the way these site plans are presented, it goes up to code and beyond code for all of your ordinances with offsets. 10 foot off of all side streets, 25 foot off of Highway 276. Off the top of my head, I know that the variances between structures need to be a minimum 25 foot. I've got it at 28 foot just to get a little extra room. With the neighbor that's on the northwest happens to be residential, I've included that 10-foot buffer and a 6-foot privacy, privacy friends on that side, plus the entire north side of the property. So going above and beyond the ordinances, just, I wanted to address that, that was part of the discussion on Thursday that was misled. Also want to point out that fire lanes was a topic that came up on Thursday, which I think altered the sentiment of the committee. West Watkins Code does not require fire lanes for a facility this small and of this nature. Even under Chapter 245 of the Texas Level Government Code, you know, a committee can't come and say, you know, I have to be reviewed under different regulations other than the regulations that I applied under. So I applied under the ordinances that were August 2nd, I believe, whenever I applied. And I know that there's still no, there are workings to put in fire lanes. But regardless, that being said, on Thursday was a little bit off-putting, and you're kind of moving the goalposts, I felt like. It's not required by the city, and if it was, I would, I would have included that. No, no problem. Also a general reminder just about Chapter 245. Municipality cannot deny a special use permit based on the generalized community opposition. Has to be supported by substantial evidence showing the proposed use would have negative impacts exceeding acceptable limits. Those limits being found in your book of ordinance. And again, I'm doing it by the book, you know, I went above and And again, I'm doing it by the book, you know, I went above and beyond, I just needed to say that. Second point about Thursday, there's some negative sentiment about the site plan itself not showing enough information. And taking a vast base value, it's a little bit ambiguous, just saying there's not enough information there. I use MTG Stovall, which is, I believe, you know, an architect and engineering firm that you guys have worked with many times before. I ran it by code enforcement and got the green light on it. And to my knowledge, I think it includes everything that you guys are looking for in terms of site plans.
Okay. So I don't want to get too hung up on the Thursday meeting, because I mean, it's relevant, yes, but but doesn't really have a whole lot to do with especially the public hearing side of it.
Sure.
We may, we may look at getting more into that in our regular session. But again, even then, it's not real relevant to what we're doing today. I mean, we can hear what they're saying and then we go from there. Does that make sense?
That makes sense. So I'll fast forward a little bit here then, for time's sake and everybody's sake here tonight. Last point I want to say, I know, and it was a big concern, this last point on Thursday, which gets into my next point, that it was mentioned, you guys had data that self-storage occupancies in this market that they were low, that there's not enough demand for it. And the committee told me that they got the data from you guys. Do you have that data on hand on the low occupancies or...
It's just talking to local business owners.
Sure.
I mean, we're a small town, so people talk to each other. And to be honest, the guy that built the one down here, he sold it because of that. It was, it was not making enough money. His name was Scott, God honest truth, because it wasn't making enough money. And he had plans to add on to the back of it and did a lot of excavation work and his revenues were going down. So he put a stop to that and ended up selling it. It wasn't generating enough money for him.
Sure. To that point, so I'm coming from the industry in self-storage. And when I've called facilities to potentially purchase in different areas, when I do just ask them, hey, like, what's your occupancy these days? Their output for two reasons. One, they think I'm going to make an offer on their facility that they don't want to sell me. Or they think I'm going to come in their market and bully them out and, you know, price gouge and build a facility next to them. So their posture is negative towards me. When I do do that, and they typically give me false numbers that, hey, we're actually low occupancy, this is a dead area, you shouldn't come in. Which is why with West Rockin in this area, I use the data aggregator to find the true occupancies of comparable facilities that I'm building.
So let's get into that side of it in the regular session. This is, this is just kind of telling the public that it's going to happen. I don't want to get into a ton of discussion on this side of it and we're fixing to be at a regular session time that we're, our law's supposed to start.
Okay.
And it's my fault. I probably should have kind of interjected on the Thursday, I mean, because we were hinging a lot on that Thursday. It's really not relevant to what we're doing here.
Sure. So I'll hold on to the data that I have for later then.
And we're going to go back into this for our regular session.
Okay. Then I think that's all I have, I guess, for the public side of things. I guess the last statement, I guess, for the residents here, you know, it's, I'm a small mom and pop shop. It's me and my old man and we're not here to just change the community or anything to serve it. And part of that, I'm going to get in the data why it's needed. I think that's, that's all I have for the public then.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. Last one, thank us another prior discussion interaction to close the topic here. Second.
Judge Gobin.
Craig Sprinkle.
James Schump.
Chris Burkett.
Closed and we can roll right into the other one at this time.
He said his name, we just can't, can't hear him.
You can't hear him?
We're going to speak sign language.
He muted himself up there.
Yeah, you're muted. So we're going to start rolling, right? And because it's already time, seven o'clock, so we're going to call our regular session meetings in order. We're going to start with indication with Ms. Robin Myers and then we're going to go into play the revision after that.
Dear Lord Father, we're so grateful for this gathering here tonight. We ask for your wisdom to guide our council and mayor as they make decisions for our city. Please bless them, our city staff, and all employees as they do the work of the city. And Father, tonight we ask for special prayers for the two young Korean firefighters that were injured while answering the call to duty to help others in need. Please pour your healing power over them and give comfort to their family, friends, and fire department colleagues as they go through this incredibly trying time. Father, we ask that you watch over our city, our citizens, our state, and our country. And bless us as we go about our daily lives and pray out these things in your sinuous name.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have, I know, we've got announcements from Ms. Robin Myers and the citizens input. Ms. Robin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I am Robin Myers. I'm the president of the Rockin Volunteer Fire Department Auxiliary. And we've got three events upcoming that just kind of want to give you a little overview of. On Thursday, which is this Thursday, September 11th, at the station, starting at 7:00 a.m., we're going to have the 9/11 tribute to the fallen. The event will have guest speakers, they will salute the fallen, tabs will be played, we'll have an aircraft flyover, and 276 will be lined with apparatus for many fire departments, police departments, sheriff, EMT, Hunt County Medical, et cetera. They'll also, I think we're going to have some flags lining that area in front of the station. So, and then after the event itself, there's going to be a time of fellowship and some food. Todd and Teresa Snyder from the Black Shack are graciously going to be bringing some food for everyone after it's over. It is, it's free, open to the public. And so anyone that wishes to come join us is going to pay tribute to these brave men and women that gave all on that horrible day. If anybody wants to flyer on this event, I have that. Is there anything else you want to add?
The earlier you get there, the better. It gets pretty crazy out there, so...
Yes, it does. And it is a really beautiful event, very moving, very emotional event. Anyone that would like to come to that, you're welcome to come. Then on Saturday, October the 4th, the auxiliary and the fire department will be hosting Gospel Fest in our city park. The start time on that is noon until about 5:00 o'clock. So far, we have five gospel, graceful bands that have committed to play. Most are well-known love groups with one coming from out of state. This is also free to the public. We just ask that you bring a chair or a blanket or something to sit on us. We don't have much seating for anyone. And if you want to bring a canopy, you can set one of those up too and put a table and chairs on it. We've had them do that before in the past. The auxiliary, auxiliary will be selling by donation hamburgers, hot dogs, cold drinks, and all the extras. And this is a well-reminded, this is a weather permitting event, so we will not be rescheduling it if it's raining. Then on October the 31st, it's trick or treat at the station. We did this last year for the first year and we had a huge turnout. It was a lot of fun. The kids had a good time. It's free to kids of all ages. We'll have lots of candy, some games. And any organization or group that wants to come and set up a game or a table inside the station, feel free to do that. You can do that, hand out candy. We're still currently working out the details on that, so we'll kind of announce that as it gets closer to the event. So if you need more information on it, you can contact any of these things. You can contact the fire department or the auxiliary. And also if anyone wants to donate candy for the trick or treat, you can bring it by the station before the event.
Thank you. Robin, what are the hours on gospel? What are the hours on gospel?
I believe we're going to start about 5:30.
Noon to 5:00.
Oh, the gospel is from noon to 5:00 till about 5:00 o'clock. It just depends. Some of the groups want more time than others. Some say they want 30, 45 minutes. Some say they have to have an hour. It just depends.
Okay, start at noon then. Start at noon then. Any other announcements?
Just that on October 31st, the city hall, the city hall, public works, and the police department. I think from 6 to 9. The whole community is invited to come out, decorate your car, bring candy, have candy down. But he wants to donate any candy to the city hall or police department, if one of them... Any vendors want to set up during this?
Thank you, sir. What time are y'all going to start it? It's going to be different events, okay.
So you can make your, so you can make your way back and forth.
They started to be sugar.
Yeah, no kidding. They did last year. They went back.
Yeah. They're going to be sugar up in this. Okay. Any other announcements?
We got the park bathrooms. The doors are fixed.
Good deal. Are you? One more announcement? All right, so citizens input. Do you have any citizens input? One more? Takes us to consent agenda items, A through M. Any questions, any discussions on those?
No discussion. I make a motion we approve the consent agenda items.
Just second it.
Judge Gobin.
Craig Sprinkle.
James Schump.
Chris Burkett.
Well, that'll take us to old business, item A, discussion interaction for council to complete performance evaluations and goal setting for all department heads. James?
Yes, something we talked about last time. We sent the sample performance review document. I was told that we, the city, never had a performance review for employees in the past, or at least for a long time. So it's suggesting that we do it and I would suggest maybe we, the council approve two members to go and do this so there's no quorum issues. You know, I think we can do all of the department heads in one afternoon if we can. You know, just fill out the form, come to the meeting. We set an hour each for each department head and then we'll just go through it and be done with it.
Are there any suggestions of who those people will be?
For the, oh, no, I don't. I'm volunteering.
You're volunteering?
Yes.
It's too hard for me to be here during the day on confirms, so we've got other members that are here, so...
Need one more?
Francis already looked at one. It just depends on when it was, you know, there's too many days a week I'm already... I mean, I'm sure plenty of them are scheduled. I hope it's scheduled. That's the whole thing. And I think this would have to be scheduled if you want to schedule it. So it's going to be, hey, tomorrow, let's do this, right? Yeah, I'll be round one. I'll do the first year and see what we can come up with. I'll do it with you.
Okay. Schedule something.
So is...
I'll make a...
Is there a motion for that?
Yeah, I make a motion to schedule the performance evaluations for the department heads. And the volunteers to do that are James and Craig.
Where is this, where is this?
When you should be here. Where's it?
The platform, the form that they're going to fill out.
They have to fill out a form and then in the meeting we'll discuss about, you know...
Do we have, do we have a form yet?
That was sent, yes. That was sent, you know, in the last meeting. So it's a pretty simple form. It's not very difficult. And, you know, keep in mind that we don't know all of the things that department heads do. So some of it is going to be trying to understand what it is that you do and what should be done, so...
That's fine. So you made the, you made the first, a motion and you seconded it, right? Chris, second on that?
Judge Gobin.
Craig Sprinkle.
James Schump.
Well, that takes us to item B, discussion interaction for department heads to complete performance evaluation in both states for their employees and submit reports to the council and mayor for review.
It's the same thing, same thing, but it's got to be done after the performance review with the department here. So they know exactly what's in store. They use the same form for their own employees, do the same process and come back to us with the, with the reports. We're not going to review them. I mean, we'll review them, we're not going to interview them.
We had something.
But we never got it. But this is pretty simple, this is very simple.
I had reviewed it here. Very simple.
I'm saying the city has done something before, but I've seen it.
Yes.
So all I'm going to say that is we need to make sure that whatever we've done in the past, that there's not some sort of, something that's been passed by council, that that's what we're supposed to do, right? And, and, or we need to make sure and check our hand, double check our handbook, see what our handbook says about that sort of policy. I mean, it's okay. It's great to do performances, great to do reviews for your employees. You should. People should always do them. And the key is they're not always raise reviews, right? That's what a lot of people think of them as, but it's not always the case. Sometimes it's just a review to, to check things out and figure out where everybody's at and see where everybody wants to be. But we have done something in the past at this city. I've seen them for sure. And if we've got some sort of, I guess, we have an ordinance, we've got an ordinance or something that's in place.
We would, I mean, most likely it would be under your handbook and then you adopt that basically by ordinance, yes.
So it probably just states in there something about there will be a review done, blah, blah, whatever. So all I'm asking is let's make sure before we get too crazy with this, we double check that.
Okay.
All right.
We make a motion?
Sure.
So I think we made a motion, didn't we?
No, I'm not, yeah.
So we make a motion for the department heads to complete performance review and go and setting for the employees using the same, same form. They do their reviews and bring it to the council to review, to review it. That's it.
I second on that.
Second that.
You second it?
Yeah.
Who are we going to vote?
Judge Gobin.
Craig Sprinkle.
James Schump.
Chris Burkett.
And this would be done after the department head.
Yes. Because we might learn something from the first review, you know?
All right, so it takes us to 7C, discussion interaction to consider reviewing job description, posting a job for a city administrator via city management.
So we talked about this too last time. The city is, you know, there's a need for it. The city is growing, you know, so I think all of us will learn from it. It's not, you know, it's not against anyone. It's just, you know, everybody has to grow, you know, there is more experience and coming into the city, we all learn from it and all of us will be better off for it. So I'll make a motion to, so we had a job description that was sent initially and then it later, there were a lot of modifications to that and again. And it seems that in 1994, there was another, there was a, the council approved it and then you sent me the document. So what we sent, what I've sent is pretty good actually, you know. One or two sentences here or there is not going to make a difference in the applicant's quality. So just go with what we have posted someplace. And then when you post it, maybe attach that UDC brochure that they have built. There's a lot of people don't know about West Rockin, but that gives them a good idea about what West Rockin is all about. Attach that and then when you post it, send a link to all of the council members. And when you get responses, send it to all of us too.
Has anybody put any thought into what we think the salary for this position would be? So I pulled up a bunch of information today looking at what cities... What'd you find the median was? Between 85 and 105.
That's the median.
That's the median. 120 is at the top and 112 is a very closely neighboring city's city administrator.
So before we vote on that, we need to understand what exactly that does, what the impact is on council and mayor. What the impact is on what our rights are as council mayor. What the impact is on what our rights are as council mayor, or as city manager.
Well, city manager versus city administrator. Administrator is what my understanding is we were talking about.
Yeah, but they're.
The same.
They're, they're technically somewhat the same.
City manager, you don't have to be accorded a hat, you have to put it on the ballot to vote on to get a city manager.
But city, city administrator, once we go into city administrator, and I keep in mind, we still do have to have city secretary.
Sure.
By law. So once we go into city administrator, if you go into the government code, then yes, it's, it does. Chad's point does change some of the things within how the functions within our city work. So I don't know if there's something we would have to do within ordinances or anything like that.
They should already be there, because we've already had them in the past.
I don't know if we did it right. I don't, I don't.
So that is something we need to review and verify, yes.
But, but again, we need to understand that it does, would change the scope of things. To the way our, our city does. And I, and I think, if you peel the onion back, I think the cities our size, the reason why the government code is written the way it's written is because of the simple thing of money, right? That's, that's the reason why the government code is written the way it is, and that's the reason why in towns the size of ours fit into that statute. That's the reason why it's written that way, and, and city administrators never mentioned, and or city managers never mentioned, because cities our size are not going to afford those positions, right? If I'm being honest, it's, it's the job of the council and this, and this mayor of this city to do the things that you guys are looking to ask a city administrator to do. So we, we could do one of two things, we could spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, because I can promise you that the research is, is off, right? If you, if there's somebody next door that's working for a hundred and ten, they won't come over here for a hundred and ten. They wouldn't come over here for a hundred and fifty. You see what I'm saying?
I don't, I'm just, I mean, I'm listening to.
I don't know how much anybody here is in, having to hire people today, but I promise you, the wages have jumped in the last two years exponentially, right? I'm telling you guys, guys that I'm bringing into, into my industry, it's, it's almost ten bucks an hour. It's, it's just fiberglass.
So, we sat here ten minutes ago and talked about the lack of, of, of time for us to be able to do performance reviews once a year. But yet, we're gonna expect ourselves as a council to have the time to go and do the things that a city administrator would do.
I'm, I'm just, what I'm telling you is that's, that's actually what the creation of this council and the mayor in a city of this size, that's the expectation. That's how the government code is written.
So mayor, we, we know that, you know, performance reviews haven't been done, and as a council, we don't really know, you know, what's going on with every employee who is working, who is not working. We don't know any of that stuff, you know, so we're not really managing anybody, not any, that's our departments. And I, as such, I believe that they're all over work, they have too much on their plates, that, you know, that's my belief. And adding one more person is, is, is going to make life easier for most of them.
It's also gonna help prioritize the things that we want to get done as a council by having someone to be able to direct that. And, you know, I kind of feel like, we talked about a city administrator at the last meeting, and that we were all pretty much in favor of it.
So they become like the gatekeeper, that's who you go through for anything. You don't go to JD for something, you're gonna go to the city administrator, and they're, they're gonna decide whether, they're gonna tell JD whether you don't have.
But don't you think they act in our, in our direction? I mean, wouldn't that, wouldn't that be? Be the way it's supposed to work? And. Same thing, yeah.
So let me, about the, the salary that you're talking about, you know, let's just agree on some numbers, say ninety thousand. Give you some number, put it out, you know, put it out in the, in the market, see what we get. We don't get anybody, let's say, cashiers from, you know, Dollar General is supplying and things like that, then we'll say, we'll scrap it, don't do it. But if you're getting some really good quality, keep them, then we'll consider it, you know, we're not hiring anybody, we're just putting it out to see what's, what's available. And if you don't get anything, we, we do nothing. And if we get some good ones, let's take it.
Is there a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion.
What is the motion?
I'll make a motion to use the job description that we have and post it on the sites that we normally post it at. And, and post a salary of, say, ninety thousand. Salary of ninety thousand.
That's on the next item, well, that's the next item.
That's the next item, okay. Post it and then send, uh, send a link of that posting to all of the council members. And when you get responses, send that also to the council members.
That is on the next item, but if you're gonna post something, we'll have salary on it. Next item is to.
Maybe I'll combine the next item too, right?
No, it doesn't.
Separate.
My second.
Motion made, seconded, we got votes.
Without us fully understanding now.
Greg Sprinkle.
James.
Chris Burke.
We got four, four. That takes us to the discussion interaction to add a budget line item, potential salary from city administrator, city manager, flash city manager position, I guess. I mean, that's probably three quick, you got a motion for that, okay? Because we just gave that salary now.
I make a motion to post a salary of ninety thousand for this job, for the city administrator job.
Can we discuss that, since you made a motion?
Yeah.
Because I think it needs to be higher than that. I think if, I think it, I think if you're, if you're, if, the range I looked at today was eighty-five back to one oh five, the average, and you start at the low end, that's what you're gonna get in candidates.
The ninety thousand.
So no, I, I think we need to start at a hundred and, and potentially work our way up or down from that. Because we can do that commensurate on the experience and everything else. And we can say the range is, that it's a range from ninety to a hundred and five, or something like that. And it would give us much more opportunity to have more candidates, because if somebody looks at it and says, with only ninety, they may not apply, like, you know, like Kevin said.
Where exactly are y'all getting the money from?
From the budget, it's there.
Okay.
You, you make a motion.
I make a motion, we put a range in from ninety to a hundred and five thousand.
A second.
At one oh five? I wouldn't put four oh on it, where the low is, because you might not want it, you may have somebody who's new, or you would want maybe getting only eight.
So up to, rather than, better than a low, okay, so I make a motion, we do up to a hundred and five thousand. Rather than.
A second.
Second, I know.
Greg Sprinkle.
James.
Chris Burke.
No.
You got the votes? Alright, that takes us to A, new business, discussion interaction. The Priver Denial Reflet of one twenty-one Dover Drive, West Wachenee, Texas, seven five four seven four. Legal description is S two one five seven, Bee Tree Investments, adblock, twelve acres is one point seven one seven, property ID is two thirty-eight five zero eight. And Dover, and two oh five Dover Drive, West Wachenee, Texas, legal description is S two one five seven, Bee Tree Investment, adblock eleven. Acres is one point one zero two, property ID is two three eight five zero seven, found single family SF two. The request is to grant a reflet of two properties in the seventeen lots and three streets. But if I'm correct, that's actually twelve, right?
Yes.
So it's, it's actually twelve, so we would.
Twelve.
We would say that's twelve. Any more discussion on that, do we want to bring? And I'm sorry, I, I.
Yep.
Mr. Paul back up to speak, or did, did, did everybody get kind of what they wanted out of the public hearing? Well, I mean, in the way, in the way that they're saying it, and they're gonna present to the city, the HOA would own them, and there's nothing to say the city would ever have to adopt them, even if they do not maintain them. Because it's a private road. Even though, even though it's within our city, it's a private road, so the, the city has no obligation whatsoever to ever adopt the road. Now, there could be a plea by all twelve residents there, coming to council and asking for the city to adopt the road, shell, the HOA fail at their responsibility. And that would be depending upon whatever the council decides from that plea from those citizens. Well, there would have to be a lot more approvals come through if this were to pass the council tonight. There would be a lot more steps that would have to be brought to council to be approved. This would just be the, the start of being able to cut the pie into pieces.
Randy, do you remember, like several months ago, we had somebody came in to ask for a rezone on something, picked up from ag to, um, commercial. And they, some of the neighboring landowners came in, because they were concerned about, there was like an easement along that road. You can kind of think about it along those lines, those private property owners are gonna have easements on the road that exists under that HOA. But it doesn't become the city's road unless we affirmatively take steps to adopt that road. It is gonna be a private road unless we say, sure, we'll take it. Unless part of that contractual, so you know, the subdivision agreement says that they're gonna do something, provide us with something, and that we would then adopt it. But unless that's part of that agreement, it is a private road belonging to that HOA. And if the HOA fails, and those private property owners have, you know, cause of action against their HOA, but that is still not our fault. That, does that help any?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's to you, counsel.
I make the motion, we approve the reflet.
That's, seconded.
Motion made, seconded.
A second?
Yes.
Judge go with.
No.
James.
Chris Burke.
Four to one, do you have the votes? Okay. Okay, duh, uh, so that takes us to B. Discussion interaction to approve or deny one twenty-one Dover Drive, West Wachenee, Texas, seven five four seven four, legal description, S two one five seven, Bee Tree Investment, adblock twelve. One point seven one seven acres, property ID is two three eight five zero eight, and two oh five Dover Drive, West Wachenee, Texas, legal description. S twenty, twenty-one fifty-seven, Bee Tree Investment, adblock eleven, acre is one point one zero two, property ID is two three eight five zero seven, zone, single family, two SF two, request is to approve the site plan.
No discussion, I make a motion, we approve this.
Motion by Chris, first.
No.
No, they say the same thing, same argument.
Yeah, motion made by Chris.
I seconded.
Seconded by James.
Judge go with.
No.
James seconded.
Chris Burke.
You got those votes? Alright, so then that takes us to C, discussion interaction to approve or deny the special use permit and site plans at one forty West Highway two seventy-six, West Wachenee, Texas. Seven five four seven four. Legal description is A, zero four one eight, Hales Actur As tract, six dash one, acres is point nine five one, property ID is one oh one, eight eight four. Zone, commercial. C, the request is to approve a special use permit to place storage units on the property and approve the site plan. I want to make sure, in reading this, it says to place storage units, that mean field, correct?
Yes.
You see what I'm saying? I, I just don't, I mean, if this.
That could be our language.
It, it, it could be, but I mean, I think, I think that probably should say field, because place means you haul something in and set it down.
Yeah, permanent versus, I'm very sure.
Yeah. Permanent structure.
I can go through some of the data. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir.
Show you some of the.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, that's for everybody. This is the, this is the, I wish I could show it to you, I'm very much racist, I'm Mr. Andrew. But here's some of the data that supports me putting specifically storage units on two seventy-six and in this market. And I agree, you know, calling the facilities, they're not gonna give you, might not always give you a true answer for your occupancy. Uh, but this data is taken from StoreTrack, StoreTrack's global self-storage data aggregator. And it scrapes data from the facilities' websites, their leasing occupancy. And it's free for everybody. And so what I did here, months prior, close to a year now, is that I take our, our market here where this property is, I draw a seven mile radius up to fifteen miles. And I take the comparable facilities of what I'm looking to build here. And so, to get into a little bit of this, this is only a build for residential and for the residents to put their personal things. It's not boat storage, it's not outdoor storage, it's not RV storage. It's solely areas, private areas that they rent to roll up door, close it, leave it, forget about it. And so the comparables for these locally are BoltBox, DoorMax, I got Quinlan Self-Storage, HarborStorn, and Eversil. And so what the data pulls here, it's, uh, gives it distance from my property, year that they're built, number of units, which is kind of arbitrary, because the unit mix varies a ton. But if you look at the rentable square foot here, that's kind of key, so you got the total rentable square foot, and then it's physical occupancy, which is on paper, how many units are rented on each facility. These numbers, even though they're high at ninety-one, ninety-six, eighty-one, and eighty-four percent, they're still conservative, because these do not account for the paid releases or cash payments that some residents might pay. And so, just furthermore, so StoreMax, they actually expanded in twenty twenty-four, they added eleven thousand square foot. And Quinlan Self-Storage expanded in twenty twenty-one, and then again, twenty twenty-four, they added forty-four hundred square foot. Uh, and this is to support the demand that's shown here in the occupancy numbers. For me, in my property, the plan is to build just under fifteen thousand square foot. And so the question is, does the demand support an additional fifteen thousand square foot, specifically fourteen thousand seven hundred? It does, so the average occupancy in this market is eighty-eight percent. A rule of thumb in the self-storage industry, eighty-five percent is considered optimal. So we're three percent over already, at eighty-eight percent occupancy for everybody else.
So I, I, I don't, I don't need to argue the numbers with you.
Sure.
I think what, I think what concerns me is that it's the two seventy-six frontage, and we have X amount of space down two seventy-six that is considered prime real estate for us to develop into something, right? And that, and, and a self-storage unit doesn't, doesn't generate, you know, additional traffic to anybody else, any other businesses, anything that builds a tax base, which is what I believe we need to do with our prime real estate. So, would your self-storage unit. So would your self-storage unit do just as well and be just as necessary a thousand feet off of two seventy six?
It would not. So the key with self-storage is you need frontage to be operational. It's a very boring industry and it's something that, you know, a lot of people just don't know about, but I, you know, this is, this is what I love.
Understand, I'm just curious, I'm just curious. Like, wait a minute, it's, it's self-storage, you rent it, you forget about it, and you need frontage?
Yes.
So there's a couple of them that have, like, the doors are broken, they, they, they got units in there that have been unpaid since like the eighties, like, on this list right here. What do you do to, like, keep it from being abandoned pretty much?
Absolutely. Main thing to your point about the doors broken, mattresses outside, which I saw at, I'm not going to say who, but, cobwebs, everything, seventy percent of visitors are women for self-storage, no matter what area, this is nationwide. And so if you lack the upkeep, you're gonna have vacancies, you're gonna have, you know, neglected units and facilities. With here, they were built nineteen sixty five, eighty five, eighty eight, ninety six, to your point. A 2025 build, fresh, clean, grade A, point four seven security, keep that entry, will stop that from happening.
I think I'd like some time to collect a little more data on this. Can we table this one until the next meeting? I'd like to make the motion to table it.
Seconded, that's great.
We got three seconds.
Judge Governor? Chris for Kit.
They're gonna, council will discuss it, and then somebody will get back in touch.
Okay.
To get some more information.
Yeah, I'd just like to collect a little more data before I make the motion, before I vote on it, so.
Sure. Is there anything top of mind that I can potentially answer for you?
No, not really. I'd just like to do some research on it. I just don't want to drive through a bunch of abandoned storage places.
Motion made and votes wrapped.
Yes.
Somebody in the city will be back in touch with you. It'll be on, it'll be on our next agenda, it may be on our next agenda this month. We may put it on one of our special section meetings. We're having another meeting this month.
Sure. Okay, can I add just the last point that I didn't get to yet?
Yes, sir.
Which may, may answer some data points. The population growth in this area from 2020 to 2025 has been over fifteen percent. And you can correct me if your city council, you know the numbers, like in fact, you're in. I just pulled this from World Population Review. That fifteen percent is fifteen percent of the last five years. We're behind three percent occupancy in square footage. This fourteen thousand seven hundred square feet, as a percentage of a hundred and twenty six thousand that's in this market, comes to twelve percent. So an additional twelve percent of self-storage square footage meets almost directly your fifteen percent population increase the last five years. And so not including the next five years, twenty thirty, but you're at a rate of over three percent growth, you're gonna need, I mean, we're gonna need even more space than just fourteen thousand seven hundred. So from a demand perspective, that's, that's the reason why it needs, it needs to come in fifteen years ago.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sure, thank you. Okay, so that takes us to the discussion interaction on presentation from Derek Moore regarding future development here. We have like three seconds. How are you? Pretty good. What you guys got?
I thought we were doing...
We're gonna do this before they go into the world.
Okay. I guess honestly, I'm just trying to figure out where everybody's at on the water line in front of the development here.
Do we have anything on that other quote from engineer?
Uh, yeah.
Actually, you got that coming up on E.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's on our agenda, but this, to me, the way it was put here, I guess, was there not a presentation that would probably be brought to us by you guys?
So we had some ideas, and then the next request was an update, so if you can show now on this, on this one, or if you guys want to do that, add the water lines next and flip them for a better flow, that's fine.
I mean, I don't know, I mean, the presentation, I'm curious, what was the presentation, conversation?
Any ideas? I don't know that I have any that are worth discussing at the moment, that's it.
I mean, I don't know, I'm kind of lost here. I thought there was a presentation, and I'm just, as far as what we're reading and talking about, the conversation, this was put on the agenda for a reason. But if there's not a presentation, then I guess we can move on to...
We just move on, yeah.
Item E. Okay, so item E is discussion interaction on status update on water line, two walking clause.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmember, city staff, and everybody present. I'm representing all the property owner that's developing in front of highway two seventy six, who is in need of this water line. James came, Gori Joshi, and Aditya, who is building the hotel. And my name is Samir Stresta, I'm from KNS Engineering, and I've been doing all the development from the site plan plat for all the property owner right in front of the city halls. So I know, I think you have some question. And I talked with all the property owner and the timeline of the project has been pushed because of the water line issue for the last three months. So this is a very crucial infrastructure that we need for all the development that's happening on those three piece of property, which I think Derek Moore needs to. So as I was talking with all the property owners and developers, it was very crucial that because of the finances that's already in place, because it was surveyed and marked by the city as an existing water line up to the point of connection, which James and Gori was tapping into. There was no, there is no budget accounted for that water line extension from our end. So I talked with the hotel too, which is, was tapping into the water line extended by James and Gori for their services. Their, their budget is, budget and the timeline is a little bit at stake because of this water line, having, having issues with the water line. So I'll be happy to answer any of your questions, concerns, and try to answer the question too, make sure that we can come into resolution about that water line.
So I understand all the easements have been met?
Yes.
We got ten.
And I believe I read something earlier that stated that the hotel was ready to move forward pretty much immediately?
Yes, we submitted the plans for review already. We have a couple of agenda with Tech Start we're resolving, but they were supposed to build, start building May, like August was when they were anticipating, and because of some, some delays with Tech Start and water line, it got a little bit pushed back, but they want to start as soon as possible on theirs. As soon as the plans have been approved and the easement and the drainage question has been answered, they are ready to move forward with the construction.
What were the concerns with Tech Start?
It's a drainage. We are lifting, we are filling on that site, and now the water spread throughout, doesn't go to the, there's no defined ditch because it's so flat. And so when we raise the building, we're gonna keep, create a defined ditch on the Tech Start. And it was a comment made by city engineer when they reviewed the plans, when they reviewed the plans, that they need that permit. So although highway two, the Tech Start, doesn't have a drainage permit, they don't issue drainage permit without... But I have a, like, email confirmation from them that our plan, that we made some changes to make sure all the driveway and all the culvert works, the drainage, and this conditionally approved right now. So we're just waiting for the letter from them. But everything has been...
So you have an email approving, just waiting on the official approval?
Yes, that's correct. And...
Does he have that?
No, I haven't seen it. I just got it this morning.
We've been talking back and forth all day.
Yeah.
And that's going to clear up some of those comments that were on the stability and civils, which is very good, right?
Yeah. I think the two main item was trying to do a detention pond, which we didn't design it. When we went to site plan review and plating, it wasn't, there was no ordinance, like, stating that we need to have a detention. So because, solely because we're so close to the lake, that we, we're gonna bypass it. But as we went through the review, the detention was required, and we're gonna bypass that by agreeing, the SRA is gonna agree to provide us easement all the way to the lake. So the lake is gonna act as a detention for us at that point. So we don't have to detain anything on the site, and everybody can, don't have to replat or do design changes to accommodate for the detention.
So again, you're waiting on the SRA for that?
They formally approve it. I haven't got a confirmation yet. I had a meeting with them regarding a couple of properties, Rabbit Cobos one, and this piece of property with doing the same thing. Drainage, we're trying to resolve some of the drainage issue that the city has, and we kind of resolved all of them, but we can kind of mitigate what a big development like that is gonna come. We can just make it easier for the developer side of view so that they don't lose the land optimum right in front of two seventy six, because that's a premium land, plus it doesn't create any adverse impact to the adjacent property owner either. So we're pretty close on that. I'm just waiting for Jason to send me an email with the conditional approval on that one too.
So I asked Samir to come and kind of give an update on his side of things, so then we can give a city update as well, so we can all kind of come to a mutual understanding as to where we are as a whole, not just from a city perspective, but from the development perspective as well.
I mean, at the end of the day, this, this agenda, I'm just talking about the update on water.
Yes.
Kind of veered a long ways off of that, in a sense. But, so did anybody contact Tech Start?
Yeah.
It would take up to ninety days for the...
Well, I know that's what Google says, but did we actually contact Tech Start? Who did we, who did we talk to at Tech Start?
Oh, I don't know that. I have no thanks.
I mean, I just find it hard to believe that we as a...
You is the one, you, Vannett is the guy probably you want to talk to.
I just find it hard to believe, I know, I know Google says it takes up to ninety days, but I find it hard to believe that we as a city cannot get a permit to do a bore under the road.
I don't feel like the bore is that, the bore is gonna hurt us now a lot. Because then, then more development comes up, there's plans that there's a water line already there.
The bore is not gonna help the hotel.
So...
The bore is just gonna go from the ten inch straight to the line on the road.
Yeah, and I talked with the property owners and developers that it might scrap...
Did we tell anybody at the hotel that, that there was water line there? Or is it only this project that we're talking about?
From my understanding, there is.
Is there anything, is there anything written as far as all that?
All the plans show that water line is there.
I'm just saying. And so, the other, the other thing, how far down is that? Is it fifteen hundred feet? What I'm talking about for the hotel?
No.
I mean, is there water not coming from here and going in?
It's coming from where James is extending to the retail, is tapping into that, looping it around.
Right, that's what I'm saying, from, from that tap, and it's gonna loop in through the property. That's all one big project in a sense, correct?
Yeah, James is tying into the water line shown as existing, and...
You're not understanding what I'm saying. So say we've got James's project here, the hotel here, right? For all intentional purposes, if we bore it under the highway to tie it to the ten inch line and tapped into where you're needing to be, right? Then how far from that point down would we have to go to supply water to the hotel project?
But it just comes down to the timeline of the Tech Starts. I know Tech Start is, it takes time. For my driveway permit, they take time. If it drags it longer, the hotel might not happen.
Okay.
That's, that's what I got from my clients. Will it create a water issue as far as water pressure? No, if we had it turned to a loop, a loop system.
At some point, but I mean, no, it's not, the whole city of, the whole city of Embry's set off the water line. The entire city of Embry.
So those plans are passing in off of the water line on two seventy six, not looping in somewhere else.
Correct. So the design plan that's been submitted based off format that we have, it's got to be like an eight inch line. One of the, I think, the road has a ten inch line, but then when it was discussed, it was an eight inch line. When the new plans that have been submitted are with that eight inch line going along two seventy six. So if we were to do the bore, then that would bring some design constraints with the developers who would have to redesign what they've got going on to have to do that line.
Then we possibly go there, putting it in anyway.
All right, so the other thing is the ninety nine seven hundred. It talks about working, the city, city employees working with contractors, I mean, trying to understand that. Did everybody understand what that's saying? What does that mean?
The contractor is gonna help us. He's gonna bring you extra equipment.
Who's the contractor?
Brady. He's gonna help us dig, and he's gonna help us lay the line. Because if we were to do it with, without what he's trying to help, then everybody would be there. We wouldn't have nobody in the field. So for us to do that and still have the city operating, we need, that's, that's rough, yeah.
So what does that look like? Like, I mean, this, this is very vague, is what I'm saying. Does this mean we're gonna have to supply two city people?
Yeah, me and two other guys.
So three city people. So I mean, we're gonna supply three city people, right?
Yep.
Working with a contractor. I'm just trying to put it all together. Need to lay it up completely like...
What's the, what's the labor cost for the contractor? His labor, what did he say his labor price was?
All, all together, it wasn't...
Yeah, he just, it was all together, the price of dirt, the price used in equipment, and for his help.
So where, so where's the material?
That's in there.
So if the material is in there, in there, we should be buying materials directly ourselves or the city from our vendors.
We are gonna...
The ninety nine is a...
We are, that's part of the ninety nine.
And so what the question is, is what portion of that is the city spending on materials? And the other portion of it goes to the contractor. Is it forty thousand, fifty thousand? And, and we need to know, we need to know, is there, there's three city employees, what city equipment? Because we're, we're also gonna have to make sure we have city equipment.
We're gonna be using our escalator and our backhoe. Brady's gonna bring skid stairs and escalators.
So what are we gonna do when we have a major water leak in our city?
We'll have two escalators.
So Brady has, Brady has agreed to bring everything that needed.
Yeah.
We'll have ours there, but if ours has to go off, he's agreed to bring in whatever was needed. Brady is supplying the dirt, we are supplying all the pipes, and two additional...
I'm pretty sure that we do have an ordinance that if we have a project that's over fifty thousand dollars, we have to have three, three quotes.
After September first, it was on an ordinance that was part of local government code, and it has just changed up to September, September one, it bumped up to a hundred thousand.
So how many guys does he supply?
So it was...
Has he spawned extra guys too, or?
No.
So it's just him? So why would we just rent the equipment?
So let me ask you this, since this project was already... So let me ask you this, since this project was already discussed and in process before September one, are we held to an overall?
No, because we've been kind of back and forth on what we were gonna do. And so I would say that now at this point, we've investigated different things, but ultimately, we're gonna be having a September one rule. Because we haven't even submitted anything under out for a bid yet. So I mean, if we had started that, then possible, if we've done the submitted for competitive bids, then yeah, but we haven't done.
But he's just a fun dirt and a piece of equipment.
Well, man, so I get it.
And his, and his knowledge.
Supervision and supervision and expertise, I think, too.
Because in our last meeting, there was a major concern whether we thought our, our guys could handle it. So this is the outcome of that. How can we make sure and get the job done that has to be done? Keep us within, not having to go out to get all the bids, keep us not having to get the.
Bore.
The bore.
And what about our twenty thousand dollars?
This keeps us from asking you to do that, how to do that.
On the straight line. We don't need plans to put anything in the ground.
A chance to take, I'm just saying. I'm, I'm just saying.
So I, I can tell you that has been brought up over and over. It is a big chance to take, it's a good chance to show that we can do what needs to be done. It's a big chance that if we fail, but if we fail, we all fail as a council and public works. But this is a project that's got to move forward and we can't afford to do it pretty much any other way.
It does have to move forward, right? But all, I'm just putting this out there. It does have to move forward, but it doesn't mean that we make a hasty decision that that turns out to be.
I can assure you, it's not a hasty decision. It has been looked at for two weeks to try to figure it out, thinking outside the box on what we can do to get it done.
I can promise you, you're more than tech board guy.
Who is?
I am.
I like the inclusion of Grady and having an outside vendor, that that's their job. It's not, that's.
There's one guy.
He's not, but he's, they're not a utility contractor. That's what concerns me, love Grady to death, using for lots of things, I've known him for a long time. That's what can, that's the thing that concerns me, and I brought this up last time, is he's not a utility contractor. That, that's the only concern I have. And I'm just being, and you know, he's probably gonna be pissed off me for that, and that's fine. I'm just, I'm supposed to be doing, we're all supposed to be doing what's the best judgment call for our city. And he is not a utility contractor. So. And and I'm getting a little excited right now because I'm the mayor of the city and this project has not been brought to my knowledge or discussed with me at all. And it's very aggravating, because I think there's a lot of really poor decisions being made and conversations that are being had by people that don't have the freaking fortitude or the experience to make the decision. I'm just, I'm just, I am speaking up, because I, I mean, I'm just now being told two weeks. I mean, I've watched, I've watched a tree that our public works has been working on for four days. That they should have never, they should have told the citizen, no, we're not doing it, but we, 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 we spent four days and you can make that face if you want to.
They told me you came out there and told them to shut that down.
That's bullshit.
When they called me, they said, Kevin said, if we.
Well, I'm just telling you right now, I'm asking to this city and to this council that our public works department does not have what it takes to put this water line.
And I'm here to prove you wrong.
Proving me wrong and making the city look stupid is, is too everything.
I feel like we have to make some progress or we're going to potentially lose.
I understand that, but we need to have it done and done right to protect our city. We don't need to have people go out and get hurt that have not put. JD, don't take this personal, but I asked you the question in the meeting prior when we, when we talked about this. I asked, how many of you, you, how many of your guys and yourself has actually laid eight inch line? None of y'all, none of y'all have laid it.
Yes, I have. I have laid plenty of eight inch line.
We can go back and, yes, you worked on it in twenty foot sections, thirty, forty foot sections.
Okay, then we do a twenty foot up down.
You're the council, vote on it. But my frustrations are known to the public.
But I think it just comes down to the developer too, is they don't have that much patience to wait for any, you know, because they're gonna incur a lot of design fee and all those, you know, their bank is waiting on them, so.
And I understand.
To, 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 I understand, you know, your frustration too, but we have to come with a resolution to a point that if you're not gonna use the contractor, what is the resolution that we need to get? I can't, you cannot, like, it cannot drag on on the three months and hope it's gonna happen. Kevin, it's not gonna happen. Like, that's what, like, we have a, like, we went through the second review on, like, of, of our civil points. That dragged us for another two, three months. Then we got the drainage comment, which was supposed to be resolved at the first time, it dragged us two, three months. Now the water line is not there, it's gonna drag us another two, three months. So it's already dragging, like, I've been here with that particular project for almost like two and a half years.
Personally, council vote on it, it's a, it's a line item for discussion and or vote, council make your vote.
Any other council members have any thoughts or input on it?
We don't have a chair from it.
I'm gonna say we let JD do it without the extra guy.
I'm gonna, I make a motion, we let JD do it with the extra guy. I make a motion, we take Plan A and, and move with that. It seems like it gets us the best of both worlds to me. So I don't know how that works with his motions versus my motion, motion. It's two different motions.
Maybe I can ask for clarification to help with that. What is with the extra guy versus not? So you're about to plan B?
No.
Okay.
Still Plan A, but without the extra. He's charging ninety nine thousand dollars for dirt and a skid steer.
No, it's not a bust for total.
I guess it's fifty, sixty, or we don't.
Right.
His labor itself is ten thousand.
It's just one guy.
His number is ten thousand.
So what's the ninety nine thousand?
That's including.
Including everything.
That's, that's all of material, that's all of.
Do you need it?
The dirt, the sand.
Seemed like, it seemed like when we had this first discussion several weeks ago, JD said it was, JD said it was like thirty, thirty three thousand dollars for material.
Yes.
It was thirty three thousand dollars for materials, that would be subtracted from this ninety nine, some portion of the sixty six.
Just, just to make it clear, your thirty three was after the additional two hydrants. Hydrant has to be in every five hundred feet. Hydrants worth five, ten thousand, so five thousand each, so.
Fifteen hundred feet, right?
Yeah, so you got one.
Hydrant at the fifteen hundred mark?
There's one already there, yes.
I can go Greg's.
So we're, we're probably forty thousand. I'm playing by Greg's, second, Chad, Chad, you got votes? Chad, you gonna be voting?
Judge Goby.
Greg Sprinkle.
Chris Burket.
Alright, item F, discussion and our action to approve or deny the application of Teresa Sparks to planning and zoning commission.
Is this an individual who doesn't live in the city limits? Yes, okay. Here's what I know about there. The council has the authority to appoint members, but we should have, like I said, I'm, there is no restriction that I can find about having somebody who would be within kind of our ETJ or something like that. Typically, if they citizen or somebody who's on our, you know, voter registry, basically, there doesn't necessarily have to be, and typically, um, there should be, uh, something that was put into place by the P and Z, it's like part of their charter and then voted on by the council that would have those requirements inside of it. There's no statutory requirement that I can see at all. And I, I think we're in a situation where nobody can find the original statute. But I, I can tell you, I don't see anything statutorily that tells us we could not appoint this woman, because she does own a business with the.
Yeah, I was just saying, she, she has a business in the city limits.
She does.
She has a business in the city, council and county. Uh, and, and I took a class today on land use. And they did specify that ETJ can be on your planning and zoning.
Absolutely, they did not specify outside of ETJ. But I, I, you know, I was reading, I didn't, no, I understand, I was reading the local government code on it too, and I was like, I can't find anything that says that that. But because it really specifies that the council would have voted on to approve and that the P and Z would then um, put something into effect about who it would be and from, you know, I seem to be able to locate that.
I make a motion, we approve her application.
I second that.
That's what you make, second, you got votes?
Judge Goby.
Greg Sprinkle.
James H.
Alright, that takes us to G, discussion or action, discussion or take action on proposed tax rate. So twenty twenty four adopted rate is zero point three five zero six three two per hundred value. Four hundred and twenty eight thousand nine forty seven forty one. The twenty twenty five, no, no new revenue, revenue rate is point three two zero 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 six per hundred. Five nineteen one fifty three zero five. Negative fifty two one sixty eight thirty five on debt and four sixty six nine four, nine eighty four seventy on M and O. The voter approved rate is zero three three one eight four four per hundred. That would be five thirty eight two seven, two sixty seven twenty eight. Negative fifty two one sixty eight thirty five debt, four eighty nine zero ninety eight point nine three, maintenance and operation. And then the twenty twenty five debt rate is point zero three two one six two per hundred. Fifty two thousand one sixty eight thirty five. And then the twenty twenty five. Then the minimums rate, uh, zero six two nine nine six two per hundred is one million twenty one eight twenty nine thirty two. Anybody, everybody understand those numbers?
No.
No. I can, I can explain them, I mean, okay, so the twenty twenty four adopt rate is what we adopted. Last year, we adopted the voter approval rate, the highest rate we can go without putting it on the ballot. The twenty twenty five, the no new revenue and the voter approved rates are the two potential rates that would go into the general fund. The total, the five hundred thousand dollar number is a total that would go to our, with our property values. The debt rate is the same, that's gonna take care of the debts that we have in INS. And then the M and O is what would go into general fund. The debt rate, that's how they calculate that, and the de minimis is a higher rate that it gives us. Could have under thirty thousand population and it gives us an increase of five hundred thousand.
But we would have to.
But that one has to go and be voted on, yes.
Can you, can you explain the last part first?
Which one?
De minimis rate?
That one would have to go on the ballot to be voted on.
Basically, that will, okay.
So typically, um, the question with council, from what I've seen, is that we go between no new revenue and the voter approved. Voter approved is gonna give us the highest amount in our M and O order to operate out of the general fund. And from what I've already looked at the general fund, the voter approval rate is gonna be more aligned to it, but it's gonna be you guys to propose it. Once y'all propose it, then we are gonna have a public hearing on the twenty third to then adopt that, so we can finish out the budget.
Make it real simple for me.
I need a motion on which.
What's the, what's, no, let me ask my question. What's the difference between the current tax rate and the one you want?
So you've got.
Plus or minus number?
What's the minus number?
What's the plus, what's the plus or minus number between what you're charging today and what you wanna charge tomorrow?
It's, I mean, it's over three.
Four twenty eight.
No, I'm, I'm talking about tax rate. Point thirty five and point three three, so it actually goes down. So it goes down? I can't, yeah, that's my question. I just wanted to make sure I was reading that right. It did the same thing, I, I went down much.
Yes.
So I mean, it's just not, the voter approved rate goes down, it's basically two. Two hun, two thousandths of a percent, yeah.
She needs a motion to approve the voter approved rate.
I make a motion, we approve the voter approved rate.
I second that.
Okay, so one second. Everyone, okay.
Make shit simple for me.
Judge Goby.
Greg Sprinkle.
James H.
Chris Burket.
Alright, discussion interaction on setting public hearing dates, proposed annual budget, this for your twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty five, proposed tax rate for twenty twenty five.
We are going down to the very last possible minutes of this budget and where it needs to land out at the tax rate. So the latest we can have it is the twenty third with the right publication date, so we have to have it on the twenty third. I'd like to give you more time, but there's not any more time that we can give. Uh, so we have to have a public hearing and I need to vote to have the public hearing and the voting record.
Twenty third, what day is it?
The twenty third, uh, Tuesday.
Yes.
Yeah, Tuesday the twenty third, it'll be at six thirty as our typical public hearing times unless y'all have a conference. Ramsey, does the twenty third work for you? Okay.
Need a motion to vote.
Yeah, I'm making, making motion that we have a meeting on the twenty third to vote on the.
Second.
Proposed action.
Second.
Judge Goby. Greg Sprinkle.
James H.
Chris Burket.
You see there's a delay, it's my fastest way. Alright, take a minute, I just worked out for thirty minutes and then we will call it at eight forty one.
So, um, do you guys want to go back over where we need to make edits or do we want to go down from audit to where we were at? Because we kind of sure.
There's, there's a few edits that we requested to be made from the last meeting.
Yes.
Alright, so one thing I would say is when you make those edits, if you will, kind of make them stand out or highlight so everybody knows that those were made, rather than somebody having to try to make sure to go back, right? Kind of give a quick viewpoint that's not bad to look at. Just a suggestion, I don't, no.
So a lot of questions around. Is it a, a bit on the salary, is it, is it two sheets?
Two sheets?
Yeah, two sheets. I'm trying to make it easy.
Thank you, Miss Robin, you have good night.
Bye, Robin, bye bye. And then you, you guys, anybody else? Okay. So on income, I know the first question that was had would have been the equipment sales. Maybe you want to go over that? We follow the equipment sales income.
Yeah, so. I want to put the, I mean, I want to get y'all's thoughts on putting the bobcat in there.
You gotta tell us.
Yeah, you gotta tell us.
Tell us whether, whether or not it needs to be sold and replaced.
The bobcat needs to be replaced.
Okay.
So we'll have the bobcat, we'll have the boom mower, we'll have the blue tractor and the four trucks.
Okay, that total up, equipment sales, it was kind of hard.
I got this.
It still only shows ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, I know. So I got this T and L report. Right here. Okay. And this is something we're, we're probably gonna have to come back to. But I got this T and L report and we're not gonna touch any of these prices through auctions.
I'm sorry, I don't understand what you mean.
The T and L report shows that, uh, is all of our items are insured, it's gonna have the valuation with those.
A replacement.
And you're saying they're way wrong?
Yes.
Okay, so you're saying we're gonna get five hundred dollars for a truck and they think we're gonna get five thousand?
We'll get most.
I'm just saying.
Yeah.
For comparison, okay? What do you think that number needs to be for those four, six, seven pieces of equipment?
Fifteen.
Fifteen thousand? Great.
So I want to ask on that, uh, that bobcat, when was the last time it was used, how often is it used?
It's not used very often. Uh, the tracks are messed up on it.
So it's gonna make it even harder to sell?
Probably said we were gonna be able to use it if we had a major break in our city, the rest of our equipment out here on the highway.
Yeah, cause Grady's bringing an extra boat, an extra escalator.
I know, but we were gonna use our excavator and our backhoe on that project out there. And that was the question I asked, is what we're, what we're gonna do if something happened in our city during that time?
And I said we have another excavator.
That's the excavator we're talking about selling that's.
No, I'm talking about the escalator Grady's gonna have on site.
We're gonna be using it on that job. On the site, that's what you just said, right? The excavator Grady's gonna have on that site.
Right, so if we have to take an excavator off the site, we still have one on there.
But then.
We have two.
If we take equipment off the site, then the site struggles, that's what I said.
The site, the, the job continues, it doesn't stop. No matter. No matter, no matter if, if we take an excavator off for two hours, the job's still going to go.
You guys handle this shit. I'm literally done with this city. I resigned from the mayor of the city of West Warren because of the ignorance of the people that are dealing with this. I'm not what you feel would be.
What do we do now?
Be mayor pro temp, mayor pro temp.
Nobody said that, nobody's going to accept it, right?
We can't, it's not on the agenda to accept it.
Right now, we just try to.
We try to get through this.
This meeting and.
Okay, so we were at equipment sales, we're estimating about fifteen thousand. Did that work? And everybody was left out on as far as that?
Yes.
Um, going along down the road, we did not make too many edits. As I did, um, discuss with Shannon and JD as far as water taps. I know the discussion was that our number was high, but after looking at it, we're going to estimate roughly twenty. Was it twenty or twenty two taps?
Twenty two.
Twenty to twenty two taps and that's going to bring us at an estimate of eighty two thousand on the income side.
And those twenty two are, are already in works of happening.
Yeah, we've got two developments that are going to exceed that and. But we're, I don't, we didn't want to put both developments that are going to be done this fiscal year. So we want to put the majority of them in this fiscal year and then if work come great, if less, then we don't want to miss the work too much. Does that make sense?
Perfectly sound, makes perfect sense.
Okay, great. Uh, y'all have any more questions as far as revenue? Money coming in on this front page.
So you're looking at increasing it by five thousand? I want to touch on, is it boring on there?
Uh, boring is on there, yes.
I want to touch on boring. Um, I don't feel we should get any revenue on boring. But I do feel that each tap that is on the other side of the street has, has to be bored because it's up to the, the customers y'all pay for. Okay, so we don't have anything on boring already?
No.
Right, we took it out. Uh, there wasn't anything before, but there was a question last meeting as to why, why aren't we charging for it? Uh, so talking with them, we don't have a, a D structure that would give us something to charge for it. For one, for two, like you said, he doesn't want to have to charge it and make additional. Road boards are already expensive, um, taps are already pretty pricey, so it's going to end up costly.
So who pays for the, who pays for the bore when we go under the street? Okay, that was, that's what it should be, yeah.
Absolutely.
That's fine, no, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out, we're not trying to add revenue from it, but we're also not going to have an expense for it.
Correct.
Okay.
What I can do for them is give them a boring company to call and then go from there, okay?
Good with that?
Okay. All right. So we increased that by five thousand?
Yes, yeah.
Yes. All right.
I have one question.
Yes.
Is, um, what, the poly carts?
Yes.
Is that a, that is a revenue for us?
Okay, so I can kind of touch on that a little bit with our new contract, there will not be an additional charge for poly carts. Poly carts, years back, uh, before, with previous administration, previous council, it was voted to charge an additional three dollars per cart. And that is not going to be the case of this contract, so that revenue is gone. I, I, I can't say for what the exact reason was, um, I was not here, I don't even want to try to begin to speak for somebody else. Uh, but that was one thing we touched on with this new contract that we're going in, there will not be additional revenue for the poly carts.
Okay, we're not going to charge the customer for something that they paid for in the first two or three years and then keep the cart for ten years.
The poly cart service, it's all, it's all in one service fee.
Yes.
I think that's where the translation got lost years back.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going in my side.
Yeah.
I'm saying going in my side.
I'm sorry?
Moving on to water, sir.
Yeah, just the water department, um.
Salaries, real quick, I just want to touch. So yeah.
Everybody got one?
Yeah. Five hundred forty seven thousand oh sixty is based on these numbers?
Yes, it's based on these numbers and because there was questions last, last meeting about license increases, that now will change.
Okay. And I want to, I want to negotiate. If, if I'm on salary. You know, sixty five, if I, if I'm going to be at sixty five, I'd rather stay hourly. And I'd rather, if I'm on salary, I'd rather dump it up to seventy to make up for the overtime that I'm going to have to put in.
And we can't actually do that here in LA. We're just looking at numbers, so that seventy is.
It's in the budget now.
It's already, it's already.
It's in the budget, but it's not necessarily important. Uh, so explain to me how we pay for the city administrator? Since they're going to share duties between water and, uh, public, public work, streets, parks? How do we, you know, we can't.
It can be shared. Uh, it's going to be a council, uh, decision and it's relatively easy to share costs, um.
Previously, it was split half and half.
Yes, and well, I'm saying our software makes it.
Long, long, as we can share the burden between the two departments, or we expect to.
Well, and like if you see here that, uh, in this list, of course you have Tammy, your water clerk, but you have Jeannie, which is our finance assistant. Water sewer agreed to pay for that account payable position. That's where I previously was being paid out of until the general fund, until I became city secretary. General fund will go with four, one other administrative staff.
Can we get, can we get those numbers in this as well?
There, so when we go to general fund, I'll give you Albert Paul all of it, I just didn't want to add.
No, I understand, I'm just saying if we're going to, if we're going to share it on this side of the ledger, I want it, I want it on that side of the ledger. Where is the administrator in this?
So the city administrator is not on this one because we have it.
But we're going to, but we're going to take some percentage of that person's cost and put it under this page.
Yes, I can, well, yeah, I can add it, potential, the whatever, whatever dollar potential amount we're going to put, I can make that, either write that number.
But you're going to have to see a fifty thousand.
Yeah, 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 we'll have to see that fifty thousand on one side and fifty thousand on the other side, that's the person we are.
So do you want me to go ahead and potentially change that in there?
In order for us to be able to see if we can actually balance it?
Yeah, we're going to have to see it. Yeah, it's got to be there.
Okay. Um, some numbers that we did have to go back and look at were the general liability, property insurance, workers comp. I know there was questions on that. Uh, those are very tricky payables to do, so numbers and codes got crossed. I had started to get those fixed. Um, something else that I've got a support ticket in with our software is our salary. And by those, um, those numbers seem to be low and they are because we're missing two months of salary from our transition period. So I've, I've got a email in for them to kind of figure out where it went. Um, if it got lost in translation in the transition, but they're working on it to get that and I'll have that, as soon as they give me answers, I'll have that showing here. But everything is still kind of on track in those areas. Um, trying to touch on those questions y'all had last week.
And you're on, and you're on page two right now?
Yes, I'm still on page two.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions, a couple of new ones that probably are just weird. Uh, we have, will, will the vehicles that we replace? This equipment sale vehicles with, will that equipment be in this budget somewhere? Where?
So the purchase of the equipment?
Yes.
The purchase of the equipment are down in, let me find the number.
Equipment purchase, I see no dollars. Uh, about, it's, it's, uh, twenty eleven fifty three forty seven. Fifty three forty seven, equipment purchase. Twenty dash eleven dash fifty three forty seven.
Yeah, one hundred and seventeen.
Yes.
Okay, and then right above that, there's nothing yet. Yeah, right above that, we show a cost of a hundred and ninety eight thousand four hundred and fifty dollars for poly carts. We're just talking about poly carts.
That, that's because the code is not accurate, that's going to be the old one, but that's going to be where we're paying for our residential. So the way currently the, the contract is built, we pay the dumpster fees and we pay the poly cart service fees.
Okay.
You guys, this council can decide to put it all over repayment. Um, and then, and we have to split, I mean, that would help.
Just notice, so what you're, just, what, tell me, tell me why we're paying for poly carts that are not.
That is the poly cart service, so that is like the residential poly cart here.
That's what we're going to pay Blackjack to heck to give us a poly cart.
No, for the poly cart service.
To, to pick up the poly cart and empty it.
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
The poly cart services, the other garbage fees, um, that is an expense and.
We pay one ninety eight, you're going to get more than that.
That is all of the dumpster fees.
We're not, this is. I understand what you're saying, but so where is, where is the other garbage fees?
A lot easier when I'm on the computer, I can search it. Because I'm still learning these new.
Yeah, we all would like that.
Fifty two ninety, thank you.
I go fifty two ninety, ninety one and fifty two eighty nine, I don't have a fifty two ninety.
Forty oh six.
Oh.
And it is, uh, we have it.
One oh five?
One oh five, that's, that's going to be the dumpster services. So it is split currently with residential, uh, poly carts and dumpster services.
So in reality, we are. We are a hundred and ninety eight and a hundred and five, so we're three hundred and three thousand dollars in cost for garbage. Okay, and then on the revenue side, garbage. Oh, I'm sorry.
The twenty?
Outside, you're going to see it is.
Two twenty, right?
Garbage outside, garbage tax, garbage, garbage billing, two hundred and twenty. So we're three oh five, right? And you're at two twenty in revenue.
Twenty, no, because you get your garbage outside and garbage billing.
So you're at two forty six.
And then we're at.
Yeah, that's not going to cut it.
And that's not going to cut it.
Twenty nine is the dumpster and poly together.
I am trying to estimate what these costs are going to be. I may need to look at what the income, like the revenue of it is going to be.
What, yeah, I would.
Well, yes, but I was saying, I may need to look at what their contract would get a better, no, no, hold on. Two one one seven, four zero zero plus. Forty is two twenty two eight forty. That's our dumpster and poly, that's what we're, that's the.
That's revenue?
We're revenue.
That's our revenue.
That's two twenty, right?
I can, I'll, I'll, let me look at that.
So this, this is kind of why I would like to see the twenty five actual, the twenty six proposed. And the revenue from that last of the revenue and then the expense out to the side so that I'm not looking at, and if it's, if there's. Four different types of garbages, then I want all four of the garbages to come out of the amount that we're considering revenue. Because anywhere we have a deficit, deficit is where we need to find the surplus, right? So, um, the, the, again, the, the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, I don't care. Doesn't matter to me anymore. It's going to matter to me when we get audited, but it's not going to matter to me in my, in what we're doing next.
Right, right, I got you. Okay, so.
And I need it really simple.
It's simple, but with all the information and then here we are, a giant piece of paper.
I know, I understand, I understand, yes, but that's why I'm saying, we, if we can kind of eliminate some of these columns that aren't really helpful. And add columns that are helpful or, or are more organized, I think it will help. If, if you want, I will come sit down with you and say, this is kind of how I'd like to see it. And if you could pull that report for me and then I'll share it. You know, I'll do that. Do that? Friday.
Friday?
Friday.
Friday, we're supposed to go Thursday.
I'll be there Friday, you want, you want on vacation Thursday?
No, Thursday, I'm already, I'm already got.
Come on back, bring your own coffee. I got it.
Saturday, I'm Friday, Friday, I'm Sunday.
Okay.
Okay, um, so we need to go back and look at garbage just for better knowledge on it.
We just, we just really need to know, because it looks to me like what you did on the garbage revenue side. Was you took what we took in last year, which is going to be different than what we're going to take in this year, and you added a little bit to it. Because that's what should happen.
Five percent.
Yeah, well, what really should happen is we should look at eleven hundred and forty six poly carts times X, that's the amount we have. They gave us all of these numbers.
Yes, and these numbers were up and put in here before I had gotten the contract, so that's why I'm saying we need.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that, we really should look at what the actual is going to be, not what we kind of estimate they should be.
Sure. Okay. All right, where do y'all want to go from here?
We had a couple, did you have another one?
Those, those were my two, with the equipment, we, we got to add the, because we just added a hundred and seventeen thousand on cost side for vehicles. Um, does the, does that include a vehicle for code enforcement?
It can.
It can be.
You want me to tell you where that money came from?
There's a, there's a pot at the end of the rainbow.
There was kind of a pot in there, we did find it.
We had a double rainbow out there at the park the other day and you ran out.
I did.
Can't you tell Slim that?
I did, yes.
Also, we had thirty nine thousand from last budget.
Okay.
That was never used for vehicles.
Okay.
And then we got a hundred and seventy eight. No, no, seventy eight thousand.
Seventy eight, okay. So this is kind of my thought, is what we really need to look at is how much. Um, we need to look at how much we have in the bank. We need to look at how much our revenue is for this year, based on everything we can project as closely as we can project it. And then we need to look at all of our expenses. And there should be a delta or a difference between what those numbers are. And then we need to put into the budget, because it's my understanding that, um, we're working off of a revenue and expense. Account right now, and what we need to be working off of is a asset, a revenue and an expense of a budget. And if you budget the amount that exceeds the amount of your revenue, that just means you have to go into your reserves. Doesn't mean you can't, but there's, there's no reason for us to have this enormous reserve and still have potholes in the street. Or still have personal vehicles being driven, or still have equipment that doesn't work. What it means is, is that we need a, we need, as a council, we need to come up with, what is the reserve amount that we feel comfortable with? Carrying forward every year. And it should be some percentage of our annual budget, whether it's twenty five percent, thirty five percent, fifty percent. Whatever that number we feel comfortable as a, as a council puts down is what we need to say this is our reserve. Everything else is available to be spent, doesn't mean it has to be spent. It means it is available to be spent on what is necessary to help build this city. And that's where I think we've struggled, at least I have with the way that we've done budgets in the past, based on what I'm seeing. Is that we've basically said, all right, we're getting two million dollars in revenue, so we can spend one million nine hundred eighty four thousand dollars. And we do that every year, but we come in two hundred thousand under budget four or five years in a row. We think, because we haven't had an audit since two, twenty twenty one. And we think that's the way it is, but that's not necessarily the right, the way it is. And I would like to see us take that amount of money that we have and the amount of revenue that we expect. And build a budget around that with those projects in there that need to be done, that in all reality, you know. Our, our citizens deserve it, they've been paying for it for three or four or five or ten or fifteen years. But they're not getting it because we're not budgeting to do it and we need to budget to do it. I'll get off my podium.
Am I correct on this, am I correct on this contract? Didn't Blackjack actually do the management billing for us now?
I don't know the answer to that question.
No, so we don't go.
Uh, does Blackjack do the billing on the, the manager of the, of the billing and they don't? That's an interesting concept I wish we'd talked about though.
Would have thought of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, because they.
Thanks for bringing it up now, Lee. Tidely. You got a five year deal.
I know, but that's what I was saying, I did, so I thought that that was part of the contract.
They have it on billing.
Oh, oh, hold on, that's, because I thought that was part of their, their deal with us is that they were managing the billing on it and which we kind of. I don't want to get off, but that's up to look at when you go in.
Yeah.
Because if they're going to be the ones to do the billing collection on it, that means it takes it out of our hands on that expense side. Because we're not doing, basically, we're not billing and then collecting and paying them, so I couldn't even say, you know, I thought that was part of the.
Okay, we have four minutes.
Okay.
Um, so.
Yeah, I'd like to get any of the highlights in there that we see.
Okay, so these highlights, if you guys see, are things that were not spent and have no. Okay, so these highlights, if you guys see, are things that were not spent and have no attention on being spent, so that came into the carryover.
Our security system.
Uh, so. Where, where are you at?
I'm, I'm just looking at a yellow highlight and saying, we didn't buy it, security system.
Page two, yeah, we got equipment, we did not, I know it was questioned last meeting, there was not any approvals that was just going to be for.
Then on the next page, we sent, we spent seven hundred and two dollars on a security system, how did we not spend it and spend it?
So, um, our security system is coming out of several different codes, different ways, two different accounts. Not even, I'm not talking about bank accounts, but like we've got, we have set up ADT to set up, so me and Jeannie are working to consolidate those back. Splitting them up by the correct departments, because I think over time, one facility may not have had security, and we added it. But we did not think to link it to the security system account we already have, so there's some that don't even get built properly. And that's why there's so many accounts. But we do have a security system on all facilities, they are being paid, it's just a matter of what code. And that's on my agenda to talk with Jeannie tomorrow once, figure out where she's been putting them.
Okay. Uh, we have three minutes, two minutes.
Three minutes, okay. We didn't spend anything this year on any major building maintenance repair out of the water sewer, uh, fund for city hall. And we didn't have any major life repairs, so we had to pull from there. Uh, line improvements is kind of a, an interesting line, in my opinion, it was not being used for line improvements last year. This year, we haven't.
We didn't spend anything on it last year.
For contractors. For, uh, Mark at the time, so that was where it was being used. So it hasn't had, we haven't had any major line improvements that don't fall under our regular maintenance.
I also think we need to up the number under audits.
Yes, and I'm waiting on a quote on that.
Fifty-two fifty-seven, or, yeah, fifty-two fifty-seven, twenty oh six, fifty-two fifty-seven, we're gonna owe them for three years, and we're getting them done, I understood you took.
Yes, I'm waiting on a quote.
You talked to Bree Love today, I talked to his boss today.
Okay, I did talk to him today.
Okay, I talked to his boss today.
Okay.
So we are getting audits.
Yes, I'm, all with the, I'm.
I talked to the partner today.
I, I am so ready to get it there, we can all discuss it, hash it out, give them all their, their ones.
They also offered to come and sit down and do a Zoom meeting with us and discuss the audits with us, and how they get to the numbers and what's taking so long and what they're not getting.
How much, uh, maybe, there's another guy out of Point that I know that, that I seen his sort of my board, I don't know.
This, no, this is, these are the people that have, that have our audits.
Yeah.
These are the people that have our books right now, since twenty twenty-one. And they, and they're waiting on information from twenty twenty-one to finish the twenty twenty-two budget. And twenty-three, and twenty-four.
He's still going more testing, so as he gives it, I'm giving it, it's still kind of perspective.
I would like to know, um, if you go more than ten days without communicating with them, I would like to know. Had a long conversation with his bosses.
Okay.
All right, so you have those updates, we already have our next budget meeting.
Next Wednesday or Tuesday?
Running out of time.
I, I basically didn't have one.
We need to do one next week.
I, I need, I want one too, but I don't wanna go very quick.
We've gotta get this done, we're already.
Yeah.
Of what I'm saying, we got. Tomorrow.
Already are.
All right, so tomorrow, posted with sixteen, and we do another one later in the week too? The sixteen was our open ended time, uh, but we're gonna need more time, we haven't touched general fund, we haven't, no, we have not touched general fund. We've touched, uh, the court expenses on general fund.
If it's under fifty grand, we don't need to talk about it at that point.
That's great, we still gotta like.
Let's talk about the ones, let's talk about the ones that add up as top.
No, I'll talk about like, yeah, the general fund, we really have to.
Yes.
We have one for Tuesday that we left open, so there's not a one-hour cap on it, we can go three hours if we have to.
We can go Wednesday and Thursday, I can go Wednesday and Thursday next week. Well, we're already doing Tuesday.
Uh, wait, what is nine eleven?
This Thursday.
Nine eleven is the third.
No, it is, no.
This is next week.
Next week, okay, it's gonna have to be next week, the sixteenth is the earliest I can do.
Sixteenth, we already have.
Yeah, I know, I'm just saying, that's.
Can everybody do the eighteen?
Yeah.
That's Thursday, right? Thursday, eighteen.
Good, do it.
Good.
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty.
Open and shut, put your time on it.
I don't wanna put my time on this, thank you.
Last thirty. All of it.
Finish it.
All of them.
Knock this out at three AM.
That's what I was about to say, on three o'clock. Y'all am good, so.
You come after.
Okay, so, right now, as it sits, we've got the sixteen.
Yeah.
Then we've got the eighteen, we will have the public hearing on the twenty-third, with a few other agenda items as well, um, that have got to be kind of seen.
We're doing six-thirty again?
Yes. Six-thirty, um, thirteen, right?
Yes. Yes.
And sixteen, six-thirty on the sixteen.
You've got your three-day notice, and you've gotta actually publish the agenda with it, or not the budget with it, for the eighteenth, if you get an amended budget. Oh, from the eighteenth? You can't do it, cause that's not three business days in between, you've, y'all gotta do it Saturday.
Do it seventeen, twenty.
So it's gotta be, cause you can't count the twenty-third, so it can't, it's one, two, three, Wednesday, you can do it Wednesday.
All right, so going back and look, can everybody do Wednesday, so we can get this.
Thank you.
I prefer Wednesday. Wednesday, the seventeenth?
Wednesday, the seventeenth.
That does make it easier for me, cause you have kids and sports on Thursday. Fair enough, okay, so.
I would have to leave early.
Wednesday, six-thirty?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll post the agenda on seventeen.
I'll bring it, bring it, if we need to, I don't care how long, thanks, gotta get it done.
Yep. Good to go.
We're doing sixteen, seventeen, right?
Sixteen, seventeen, yes. Sixteen, seventeen, um, okay.
All right.
I'm happy.
Three days?
What?
Sixteenth and seventeenth, okay.
Sixteenth, seventeenth, and twenty-third, I think we can get it all done, so we gotta just.
Okay.
You want to do a term?
No, you get, uh, number ten, future agenda items, do we have any agenda items that we wanna see put on the future agenda?
We got both of mine.
I've got you, I've got his, I've got yours.
Remember with her, the cranks that we're getting into, or if we don't bring it up in here.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, so nothing?
Nothing.
Adam twelve, motion to adjourn.
Wait.
Oh, sorry.
Oh.
Innocence input, three minutes, non-related agenda items.
City, everything?
There you go, I think.
Nope. All right, now number twelve, they get motion to adjourn.
Second.
Touch of it, motion in a second.
Correct sprinkle.